This is the City of Wapaka, third Tuesday of the month, city council meeting.
Welcome everybody to tonight's city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, November 17th, 2020, and I'll call this meeting to order. And let's begin with the pledge of allegiance. Everyone please stand. Pledge allegiance to the flag. I have to tell you, we would not make a very good choir. Okay, Sandy, you want to read the clerk's open meeting statement for us?
Sure. This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And take a roll for us too Sandy.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Anybody say Paul?
Paul Hagan.
I do not.
Okay.
I see his name listed. But I don't see him here.
Okay, well, we'll mark him as absent for now. Paul, if you can hear us and we can't hear you, give us a call in. Or email us or whatever the case is, so we know that you're available.
All right.
Go ahead Sandy.
Here.
Scott Prichatsky.
Here.
Marcy Reynolds.
Pete Peterson.
Is now joining.
Paul Meel.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Mary's here. You need to turn your mic on, Mary.
Sorry, here.
There you go.
Thank you. Eric Olson.
Here.
And we'll try Paul Hagan once again. Is Paul on?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see him.
All right, nine present, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to just make sure that we know who else is in attendance tonight. We have our, our department heads are here, including Aaron Johnson, our city administrator Sandy Stibbs, Kathy Kaza, Peg Burrington, Tom Hart, our city attorney, Justin Behrens, Andrew Whitman, Chief Ozell is on, and of course Josh Warner is on. And then I know we have at least two guests, maybe three guests. We have Dan Reynolds, who's going to make a presentation tonight. I think I heard that Marcy hopped on too. I don't see her face, but I think Marcy's. Is there Marcy?
Yeah, I just can't make my computer work.
Okay, well, we could hear you. That's good.
Okay, good.
And then I think I saw Barb Latkey was also on.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you.
Anybody that I forgot? All right, awesome. Let's move on then. Get some record, bookkeeping stuff out of the way here. You have a consent agenda and Sandy, it looks like you have one addition there.
Number five, consent agenda letter A, monthly reports. Number seven, the city administrator's report for the month of October was uploaded to the city website. And that's it.
Okay. Are there any items that council members would like to see moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? If not, does someone want to make a motion to approve the consented agenda with that one addition?
Olson to approve.
Kealan second.
Motion by Olson, second by Kealan, that we approve the consent agenda with that one addition. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Anybody that would like to abstain? Motion carried. Regular agenda, the regular agenda, there are no additions or deletions to that. So again, we would just be looking for a motion to approve. Motion by Peterson.
Second, Lori.
Second by Chestnut, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. You know, you guys are getting really good at this. Let's hope we don't have to keep doing it, but you're getting really good. Under non-agenda items and announcements, we have, looks like Dan, you get to go first here. This is a report about the Wapaka Arts Center Task Force. Marcy and Dan, am I turning it? Well, you guys decide who's gonna talk first or how you're gonna handle this, but, um, Dan, I'll turn it over to you because your name is on this.
Yeah, I think Dan will probably take it, take, do the presentation.
Okay.
All right, well, sounds, sounds great. Appreciate it. Thanks for having me attend this meeting to present the results of our feasibility study. I am Dan Reynolds. And you may have guessed, I am related to Marcy, so this is a bit of a family affair, but I come to you with some level of experience and credentials. I grew up in Appleton and spent my summers on the chain since I was 14. So I'm familiar with the area, spent many Sundays and holidays in St. Mary's Church, so I have some perspective there as well. I'm now in St. Louis, where I've been for the last 25 years, working with nonprofit organizations and communities. To primarily, our work relates to conducting studies of this nature and campaigns. And so I thought I might just sort of introduce myself and then you might be asking who Holmes is. Well, Holmes Radford and Reynolds is the name of the firm. Radford is the founder. I'm the current president. And Holmes is in honor of Sherlock Holmes, the greatest consulting detective. And we do, we do look for a lot of clues in our work. So I thought we would, if I, am I able to control this or who's doing the clicker?
Dan, I'll just walk you through it. I have it shared on my screen, so just let me know when you need to go to the next slide.
All right, yeah, go ahead to the next slide then, please, Brian. Or is it Aaron?
Yep, Aaron, that's right.
So, so the process itself, really, our, our, our study was tied to a vision. A vision of a more creative, connected, inspired, welcoming Wapaka. With that vision, a concerned group of people formed a task force to try and determine whether or not it's feasible to build a new arts rec center in the heart of downtown to serve as a regional hub of activity where youth and children and adults can explore activity and creativity through the arts. The current vision as presented in a case for support that we distributed was to renovate, reinvent the historic St. Mary's Church. And with its central location, the art center would enhance quality of life, attracting visitors, residents, and contributing to economic vitality downtown. Next. So in this study, to accomplish that vision, it was projected through some pro forma budgeting and some planning that it would, it would take about $1.5 million to realize that vision. $950,000 directed toward the capital needs and renovation. And then over half a million dollars was earmarked to address contingencies as well as to fund operations to seed the programming for the first couple of years. So our study was essentially striving to determine answers to the following. Is it feasible to raise $1.5 million via capital campaign program in Wapaka at this time? Will the community and surrounding communities be supportive of the proposed plans? And are people willing to contribute time and resources to this vision? Is it possible for the art center to assemble the necessary ingredients to launch the program? And we'll get into that in a little bit. So the methodology is we formed a task force which served as a liaison to the community and provided oversight to this effort. They supported the development of the case for support, which is in a full report that Aaron has. They also contributed their insights to potential interviewees and participants. We conducted strategic interviews, and again, through this COVID period, we conducted these via Zoom and telephone. We also did some other work, not just interviews. We reviewed similar projects in the area, met with the city's manager, met the new grant writer, assessed patterns of giving in the community, and conducted additional research. The end of the day, about 100 people received letters of invitation. We followed up and we ultimately conducted about 38, we conducted 38 interviews, which is actually a pretty solid response. And it was, again, an apt number for us to draw our conclusions and recommendations. Again, I want to comment that this was conducted during COVID and also during a period of economic uncertainty and social unrest. We're sensitive to the realities and the implications on the donor ability and fundraising environment overall. And still, we're sort of in this weird period, right, where nobody has a crystal ball. We don't have a lot of certainty about what's next. And I know, you know, watching from down south here, you've, you've, you've all gone through quite a bit of turmoil with COVID. So we're not out of the woods yet, and it does have an effect and an impact on the conclusions that we've derived. I want to quickly run through the next slide, which talks about factors for success. If a campaign is to be successful, and this is just a little bit of edification, right? There has to be a strong case for support, a rationale that makes sense to people that it's urgent, that it's needed in the community, that there's a demand for what is being proposed. There has to be donors. There have to be people who are available to make leadership gift commitments. They have to, they not only have to be financially capable, but also inclined and passionate about something, the case is presented. You have to have infrastructure. You have to be organized, and you have to have the right tools. And you have to have organizational ability. And then ultimately, when you build a campaign, typically, it's driven by members of a board and members of a volunteer community who champion that effort. So we're looking for all of these ingredients to be able to comment on the efficacy and feasibility of a campaign moving forward. Next. So after our interviews, after the 38 interviews, we concluded that it's not feasible at this time to advance a comprehensive $1.5 million campaign to renovate the church. Okay? It's based on the following key points. The building itself has been sitting there for a while. People are concerned that it would be more expensive than proposed and cost prohibitive. Many respondents believe that the actual responsibility for preserving that building falls on the, on the city. So there needs to be some communication there, I think back with the constituents. But, you know, there were some concern that, you know, is it, does it make sense to tear it down at a given expense if the city ultimately is responsible for that? Or would it be wise to reinvest those dollars into preserving that facility? Again, if it's, if it is a priority for the city. Respondents would recommended looking at alternative sites. And, you know, downtown especially, some vacant buildings like ShopCo and Kmart were brought up, but they were, they were dismissed. Most people understood that there's a need and a craving for arts programming. It aligns with the goals of the city, and they want to make sure that if you're going to be pumping resources into an effort, that you are, in a sense, not going to, you know, discount the programming. So people would much rather see resources put into programming and sustaining that programming as opposed to putting into a building and then maybe not have the resources to run it or manage it. There's a lot of encouragement to take a look at partnership opportunities and in the spirit of collaboration. Again, I think the arts are seen as integral to the city's growth and economic plan. The, I think it's important to look at innovative networking opportunities. And there are other examples going on in the region, and it should be looked at regionally. You know, things, things happening in Wisconsin Rapids and Ripon and Stevens Point, even Monocle, we took a field trip up there to take a look at those examples and to learn from other organizations that have taken on this, this kind of an effort. I think the community, from all, from all remarks, has benefited from the tenacity and the vision of the dedicated advocates and leaders for the arts. New volunteers, including chain residents, will need to be strategically identified and recruited for this to be successful in whatever form it takes. So I wanted to show this screen. This demonstrates the benchmark scores that we've established over years of our work as well as standards across the industry. You know, we evaluated the potential for this project and measured the responses against our norms. So you can see the top four lines, image and reputation of the arts exceeds our benchmark score by four percentage points. That's a solid score. So there's a sense from those who participated in the interviews that there's a thriving arts community. There are, there's, there's progress being made. There's, there are events that people are enjoying. It's adding to the value of the quality of life in the community, and they've accomplished quite a bit. There's a perception that the leadership is in place to move this forward in terms of the competencies and the experience in the arts. And there's a respect for the leaders. There's an appeal for the case for support, again, a very solid score that suggests that the interviews, the interviewees want to see something like this happen. They would love to see an arts center, arts rec center for kids when they're out of school early typically, right? To serve as a driver and a hub for foot traffic and economic activity and all the outgrowth of synergies and possibilities for businesses. I think people understand that, and they would love to see it. However, you know, with the economic circumstances such as they are, and certainly given the cost of the St. Mary's building that caused some, some, some real prudence and caution. But people are willing to support it financially. We didn't find any major leadership gift commitments, which would be, you know, five and six figure commitments over a period of time, but there's a willingness to work on it, and there's a willingness to give. And with that kind of attitude, I think you're in good shape. The bottom scores, you can see receptivity to the campaign. People are concerned about timing. Fundraising environment, again, we're in a, in a, in a difficult time right now. Priorities are really placed and focused appropriately on basic human needs right now. The dollar goal associated with the project as presented, $1.5 million, was seen as daunting and overly ambitious. And the, the ability to attract leaders and leadership gifts, those low scores are tied to the significance of that goal. So if you look at willingness to, to work for a campaign that did exceed our benchmark, but not for a campaign of the magnitude that we presented. The potential to reach, reach or exceed the campaign goal or implement those received lower scores as well. And we'll get into some of the, some of the information behind those scores real quickly. I'm not gonna go through all of these, but I think we'll go through a couple of these slides. So again, high marks based on the, the reputation of the, of the arts and the community's exceptional interest and involvement in the arts. And again, everything from musicals to choir to arts festivals, et cetera. Many people associated this effort with the Arts Board. And in particular, Marcy, who's perceived as a passionate advocate, leader, organizer, and her track record as well as the track record of the Community Arts Board is something that has inspired some confidence. And that whether it's within this facility plan to move into the church or not, there's confidence that a plan will come together and you will see an arts and rec center in Wapaka. Again, I think while this project, this study process was managed and there was oversight by the task force, most people perceive it and recommend that it be owned by the Wapaka Arts Board. Again, this was a task force that drove this process. Next. I think that the, the arts have been highlighted throughout this difficult time as a channel for expression and a remedy for mental health. So I think people actually have a heightened appreciation, awareness for what the arts can do. But it doesn't rise to the level of urgency of, for example, food and shelter. People love the idea of dedicated space for this. People perceive there's a demand for this, both in terms of, you know, the kids that may not necessarily be out in the athletic fields and needing an outlet. The arts complements efforts in the community. As I mentioned, there's a growth plan from the city, and it involves the school district. And it includes the, you know, the, the, the city, and it, and it also involves businesses that would love to see something spur additional foot traffic and economic activity. And then there are also some thoughts about how this could be modified to include additional goals, whether that be coworking space or incubator space. I'm actually presenting to you from a coworking space and incubator in St. Louis. And there, they are very appealing and popular, and it seems to be a bit of a wave for the way people will work in the future. Next slide 14. Despite the advantages of locating the center in St. Mary's, and that includes things like parking, ample space, the architecture, et cetera. You know, they did determine that, you know, the priority must be programming over a facility. Don't let the tail wag the dog, so to speak. If the redevelopment of the church is perceived as a priority, then it's, it's suggested that the owners of that church, whoever the owner is, ultimately, needs to take a lead role in that. They do recommend that other sites be investigated and that other creative partnerships be, be looked at. Great success with, you know, the Danes Hall and Fox Valley Tech was a great campaign. You know, to be able to partner and to add credibility to this effort through collaboration and, and again, creativity would be appropriate. Interviewees acknowledge that the campaign would be necessary. So while this particular scenario of raising $1.5 million was perceived as overly ambitious, it is recommended that a campaign be developed and implemented to raise resources from the community to realize the vision of an arts center. The, the, the top line goal for that, based on our interviews, because we did look for evidence of, of gifts, would probably be in the range of $250,000 to $300,000. But that's gonna, that's be, there will be a delay there caused by this economic cloud and the, in the situation with COVID when people are finally able to, to start participating in these kinds of efforts again. So as the economy improves and leadership level donor prospects will be in a better position to consider those kinds of gifts. And so we think that the situation should be reevaluated, not to the extent that we're proposing, but sometime in maybe the spring of '21. I think the remainder of these are fairly redundant, but I, I do think that there's a proud spirit, philanthropy, the community coming together to accomplish shared goals. And it's, it's that spirit that inspires optimism for the town to come together around a project like this. I think there, there are tools that you have in your arsenal right now, including a grant writer, to come up with some creative solutions for financing. And I think that, you know, there's, there's a need to, to, you know, once this is owned by the, the board, which we're suggesting, then to build some more infrastructure around this and be deliberate and strategic about identifying new volunteers and new donors to the project, including those, there, there, there's, there seems to be an amplification of, of sort of this kind of bifurcated community, right? The Chain of Lakes and the, and the folks in, in the city of Wapaka. I think this could be an opportunity to bring people together around a common theme. But it's gonna require some, some strategy and some real deliberate thought on engaging people and involving them in this process. So the next slide I thought would be interesting for people to take a look at. I always like this slide because it, it really does give us reason to be optimistic about things like fundraising, right? As I mentioned, Wapaka is a very giving community, whether it's the Rotary or the Habitat for Humanity effort that goes on. There's a lot of giving and people rally to help one another. And that, that's a certain style of philanthropy, frankly. And we like to call it hometown philanthropy because everyone sort of joins together in an esprit de corps to accomplish shared goals. But overall, across the country, you know, philanthropy is unique to the United States. And over the years, the percentages on the left in terms of who's giving hasn't really changed. The numbers have. This is, this is in 2019, another record set of $449 billion. It's the most this country's ever seen. And in point of fact, and not to, not to necessarily conflict with what I was saying earlier, giving actually increased this spring through COVID by 7%. The challenge is for a project like this, right? Most of those resources were directed toward basic human needs. But 69% of the giving in this country comes from individuals. Okay? And 10% comes from bequests and estate plans. Well, those are individuals. So really, when you think about it, 80% of the giving in this country comes from individuals and families. And so that's important to realize moving forward and how you develop your strategies and your philanthropic model. As I said, to identify, recruit, engage volunteers who can be champions for this, people who live in the city and in the lakes, it's gonna be really, really important. So if, if, if we build a strategy around individual giving, and of course, you know, we have to give time for the economy to recuperate a little bit and give, give some time for, for example, Wapaka Foundry to be in a position to make a big gift, right, which is, is possible. The, the, the money where it goes, it goes to these, these categories. Now, about a third of it goes to religion. A big chunk goes to education and human services, but guess what? There, there's a 8% that goes to public society benefits. So when you're talking about a, a project such as this, you're talking about downtown economic development. And about 5% going to arts and culture. So you really add those together, you're talking about 13% of a slice of the pie, which isn't bad. So that's room for optimism. Next slide. So we recommend that over the next several months, as the economy recovers, a methodical approach to simultaneously address the, the following. Initiate programs. Find some space that can be shared, that can be given, that can be donated. Okay? To start programs. Generate resources for capacity building. Ultimately, somebody's gonna have to lead this thing. So to talk with the grant writer, keep communication with some donor prospects, to identify resources that can help to seed the operations, to give it a formal structure. And prepare ultimately then, under the oversight of the board of the Wapaka Community Arts Board, to prepare for a $300,000 campaign to realize the vision of the Arts Rec Center. So again, some of these are a bit redundant. The Arts Board should assume the responsibility. Whoever owns the church would have to get behind this if it is to be the church. We don't see it, but, you know, stranger things have happened. Again, refine the scope of the programs and start moving those forward and measuring those to be able to articulate in a very precise way what the impact is of the programs, to say, yes, these programs are in demand. Yes, they are popular. Yes, we need to have art classes. We need to have music lessons because there's a, there's a need that we're filling. You know, the idea of, of talking with other partners, collaboration is gonna be really the name of the game when we talk about the future of nonprofits. So engaging with conversation to explore synergies with Lawrence Music Conservatory, the school districts, Suzuki Springs Strings and other programs. Again, I mentioned Fox Valley Tech as well. We look at a timeline of about six months, being really methodical about organizing and seeing if there are gifts available to fund the startup and the seed of some staffing to make this a much more formidable effort. And then at some point, there's an inflection. And then at some point, there's an inflection point, is the economy ready? Do we have enough volunteers? Are we ready to move forward? Do we have evidence in our programming to be positioned to go out and talk about leadership and major gifts? You spend about a year and a half doing that and then ultimately involve everybody in the community in the effort to realize this for Wapaka. You can skip that one, Erin. So we thank everybody on the task force. We're grateful for everybody who served in that capacity. Special thanks to everybody who participated. I recognize a few names on this call who did, so thank you. We hope this is helpful information for Wapaka as you discern your best course for downtown development. And again, you know, these things don't just happen, they have to be planned and they have to be methodical and they require people that are, again, willing to come together to achieve a common goal. So a campaign for this will require a purposeful effort. And we just wish to thank everybody who's been involved. I think it was an enlightening study, it was a positive study on the community. We're just grateful to be a part of it and we look forward to providing our advice and as it relates to next steps for the Wapaka Community Arts Board moving forward.
Wow, thanks, Dan.
Yeah, I'm almost afraid to ask this, but Marcy, do you have anything to add to Dan's report yet?
I'm not going to add too much, no.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to add that I am teaching piano now at the Methodist Church and they've offered some space for additional teachers and we'll see where that takes us. We feel that by building some programming, people will be able to understand what our vision is. So throughout the next year, just, you know, stay alert to what we're doing because I think, like Dan said, that the town really seems to be in favor of having an arts center and sees the vision the way that we do. So we appreciate everybody's time and thanks for the opportunity.
Yeah, Marcy, thank you and Dan, thank you for the presentation. I know how much effort it takes to just put something like that together, but it was very informative and appreciate the effort through that process. And I do want to tell you that from the mayor's office standpoint and I think from the council standpoint, we want to be successful and if we can help in any way to nurture this and move forward with it, whether it's space needs in the interim or whether it's just getting the word out and so on, we are obviously still interested. So I'm hoping that tonight isn't the end of this, but just taking a different street as we move forward here.
Right, thank you so much.
I would agree with that, yeah, and thank you and to be continued. Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else have any other comments on this presentation?
The only thing I'll say, Mayor, is that, well, first of all, I think it's already been said a few times, but they did an excellent job, put a ton of work in. But this brings us to the fact that we do have one of the last extensions for the St. Mary's building with Mr. Pedrelli coming up at the end of the year, so we can expect to reengage in this conversation now that they've gone through this whole process. So I'll look forward to that conversation with council.
All right. Okay, well, let's move on then. Dan, Marcy, thank you. If you want to stick with us, that's fine. If not, have a great Thanksgiving.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye now.
Bye-bye.
All right, next up, we have a proclamation.
Is now exiting.
We have a proclamation designating December 1st, 2020 as Christmas Stamp Day in Wapaka, Wisconsin. And you can see that that proclamation is on page 85 of your packet. Remember, this will be our second annual proclamation. Sandy, I, can we just have it on file, Sandy, or is that something that we normally read or should read?
Mayor, I believe it's something we should read into record.
Okay. All right, I'll go ahead and read that then. I got it. You have it in front of you on the screen there, plus your packet, probably. Funny, even with glasses, my eyes get a little bit smaller letters. This is a proclamation designating December 1st, 2020 as Christmas Stamp Day in Wapaka, Wisconsin, whereas by 1950, a number of countries had issued stamps with Christmas themes. These included Canada, Netherlands, Brazil, St. Pierre, Mikalong, Hungary and Austria. Cuba was the first country to issue Christmas stamps on an annual basis, beginning in 1951. In 1957, Australia began issuing stamps for Christmas annually and whereas in 1958, Father Jules S. Semenu, assigned by the Blessed Sacramentary Preparatory Seminary, sorry, in Wapaka, Wisconsin, received a Christmas card from a friend in Australia. The stamp on the cover had an image of an activity center. He was so impressed by the stamp that he felt that the United States should also issue a stamp for Christmas. And whereas, he shared his feelings with Father Michael S. Woznuski, pastor of St. Mary's Magdalene Church in Wapaka, who in turn passed it on to the parish's Legion of Mary Organization. This organization, along with the local Knights of Columbus and the Junior Chamber of Commerce, the city council and the county board, started a letter-writing campaign to convince the post office department to issue a Christmas stamp. And whereas, U.S. Congressman Melvin R. Laird drafted a bill in 1959 that called for the post office department to issue a Christmas stamp featuring the Nativity and stipulated that the stamp be placed on sale in Wapaka, Wisconsin. Congressman Laird was informed that the request for commemorative stamp must be sent to the Postmaster General if the stamp requested meets the criteria established for selection. It is then referred to as the Citizen Stamp Advisory Committee. Whereas in 1962, the Postmaster General announced the decision to issue a Christmas stamp that year with the first printing of 862 million stamps quickly selling out and Christmas stamps became an annual event therefore, thereafter. Now therefore, I, Brian Smith, Mayor of the beautiful city of Wapaka, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, December 1st, 2020 as Christmas Stamp Day in the city of Wapaka in testimony whereof, I hereunto set my hand this 17th day of November, 2020. All right, so it, again, it, if you remember right, this was a request that we received last year and I think it's pretty cool, quite honestly, to know some more history about our community and to continue that, even though there were maybe some years in between there. All right, let's move on then. The next part is public input. Sandy or Erin, or did you have anybody that wanted to give us some public input?
None for me either, Mayor.
Good. Any council staff that would like to give public input, non-agenda items?
I would just like to say I'm here.
Hey, Paul Hagan, how are you?
Well, thank you.
Good, good. Thank you. Next up, we have community department head reports and I know Barb Lottke has been on and I'll, this is for the community report, so Barb, I'll let you go ahead.
I should be unmuted now, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you, okay. I'm here tonight representing the Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network and I'm just going to be reading from a document that I wrote and I believe that Sandy emailed the document to you guys. If you want to read it after I'm done, anything I have in quotes comes directly from the Arts and Culture Plan that was put together in 2018. So the quotes that come directly from the plan. And that's what I'm going to be talking about a little bit. In 2018, the community of Wapaka made that formal declaration of its commitment to the arts, recognizing that they are, quote, "integral to the health and well-being of everyone in the community," end quote, in the Arts and Culture Plan. And this plan laid out a vision that would be a guiding light for the city as well as the arts community, businesses and cultural groups like the Historical Society, Wapaka Public Library and the Winchester Academy. This plan stated that it was an agenda for action over the next few years, a living, breathing document that will evolve changing local and global issues. Little did the authors of those words imagine that in the last year of the plan, a pandemic would sweep the world, leaving small towns like Wapaka struggling under the weight of economic hardship and personal misery, who imagined that in the same year, racial issues that had seemed far removed from Wapaka would emerge in conflict and uncertainty. What the authors did imagine when creating the Cultural Plan was that art was essential, not only for the quality of life, but for nurturing a vibrant community, keeping a positive outlook and culture in a community going despite isolation, fear, loss of income and sickness. In 2021, it's going to be time again to revisit the Strategic Plan. New city representatives are in place and new ideas have emerged, just like we saw in this PowerPoint of Mr. Reynolds, will emerge to continue to support and build the social capital that comes from all the concerts, lectures, classes, art shows, theater projects and events, poetry readings, craft cafes and intergenerational community art projects that we have in our town. The Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network that reports to you guys every month was an outcome of the Strategic Plan. The city afforded the different groups in the network the advice of a consultant who recommended calling ourselves a network. The network has worked to become an instrument of communication, connecting the numerous groups in the Wapaka area. Next month, are coming together again for the Second Annual UTI Trails. City merchants reported that last year's event was one of the most vibrant days they had in the whole downtown, in the year of the downtown. The pandemic has caused the event to tailor the activities, but it emerges as an event that the community can count on. We just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the city for valuing the arts. It's become a movement and Wapaka is reaching its goal of becoming an arts destination. Thank you.
Mayor, you're muted. Again, Steve Aket, is that better if I'm muted or worse?
No comment.
Barb, I just wanted to thank you and for making the, reading that presentation tonight and appreciate it. Again, you know, just to go along with what the presentation before, you know, your group is part of the reason why we like Wapaka so much and like living here and appreciate working hard to make it a better community. So we appreciate everything you guys are doing for us.
And back at ya. Thank you very much.
Yep. All right.
You're welcome.
Let's move on to department head reports then. And I know Kathy, you have a big report at the, in the community, the whole meeting, but anything you want to add right now?
Nothing, other than my report is on page five of the packet and I'm happy to report that I finally have Deputy Treasurer, so I won't feel so stressed that it's all on my shoulders. I'll be sharing the responsibility as soon as I can get her over from the police department and they hire their administrative assistants. So I welcome Jerry Allen to the finance department and we hope that with her coming on board that we can get back on track with all the outstanding items and get ready next month for our 2020 year-end and the start of 2021. So that's one item. And then the other one is that we're, tomorrow is the deadline for the Roads to Recovery Grant for the Cares COVID from the state for $98,200 and I'd like to report that we've spent every penny of it. The other one is that we just filed for the Department of Justice COVID grant that would go out to November of 2021 and we've requested $10,000 to help the police department with PPEs and disinfecting equipment and such. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions or comments for Kathy? All right, Peg, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Can everyone hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. Well, this week, we did have a meeting after the Theta Care Community Meeting on Thursday of last week and the report that our hospitals are full and that there is no, there are no beds if somebody gets sick or has a heart attack or has a stroke. We decided that there was a vulnerable area within our department and that was the use of the study rooms. And so we're going to be discontinuing that use starting Thursday. So we hope to get that message out to people who are interested in those study rooms and as soon as conditions in our community do improve, we plan on bringing our services back to what they were before. We are still providing curbside service at an unprecedented level. I have to say, it's very busy and people are really taking advantage and we're grateful that people are able to use the library that way. We are starting a new holiday tradition, so pick up a take and make it kit from the library and have your family make a gratitude sign. And this is a yard sign that you can put in your yard, thanking all of those community helpers, the healthcare workers, the poll workers, maybe the librarians if you felt so inclined, but please just stop at curbside, give us a call and we can bring one out to your car and you can create one for your family and the kit includes everything you need to do it. We are collecting shape poetry on behalf of the Wapaka Community Arts Board and that collection box is in our lobby, along with our honor book collection. And we have moved those honor books out into the lobby to allow for browsing, recognizing that it is kind of browsing at your own risk, but encouraging the community to come in and get the paperbacks that they need and then return them in the book drop. We still have our two online book challenges going on right now, which is the Picture Book Month for November and we're encouraging all ages to participate because picture books are absolutely incredible in the things that they can teach us even as adults. And then we have our Read, Learn, Grow and that's about looking at things from a different perspective. So reading books written by somebody who may be a different religion than you are, came from a different area of the world. So that is still open to you, that will be through December. Our Second Annual UTI Trail is going to look a little differently this year and you can get those, that information on the Historical Society, they are one of our partners in providing that. Our cookbook is going to be coming out in the next couple of months, so maybe you want to see what people were cooking and doing during the safer-at-home period and you can contact our library or Historical Society to get those copies ordered. And we have a book club this month, or next month in December. If you want to take part in that, we are reading a Christmas book. Give us a call and we can check it out to you curbside. We are closed for Thanksgiving on Thanksgiving Day and the Friday afterwards, but we're open on Saturday for computer use and curbside. See us online.
Thank you, Peg. Any comments or questions for Peg? All right, next up then, we have Justin.
Thank you, Mayor. My update can be seen on page 27 and 28 of the packet. As usual, starting on the wastewater side, our new backup generator has been set up. That's the one by the Cover Bridge Lift Station over by Burger King. It's a very valuable piece of redundancy that we've added to our system. The whole west end of town will be supported during power outages now with the addition of this generator. Probably the biggest news that we recently received was from the DOT. The bids for our Main Street project came in last week. We had a state receive the total of eight bids ranging from 3.09 mil to 3.8 mil. We had a state receive the total of eight bids, ranging from 3.09 mil to 3.8 mil, which is a great sign, because we had budgeted 3.7 million. So, this project seems to be coming in very favorable to our budget and what we can afford with our finances. I should be bringing this forward to council for authorization come December, so I'll provide more information on that next month. Also, on the street side, the first of many updates at the very bottom there is for our high in Harrison Street. That's our 2022 project, so that's four blocks of Harrison Street north of Fulton, and four blocks of High Street, excuse me, yeah, north of Fulton and High Street, south of Fulton. So, the first step we took was televising our sanitary sewer mains to see what kind of condition they are, and next year, while Main Street's going on, we will start the design process of high in Harrison. Leaf pickup is nearly complete. We're going to finish up this week and possibly to next week during Thanksgiving. If you have a few more leaves, you can get them out there, and we'll come get them, but your time is quickly ending on that program. Water received a report from Mark just the other day that all of our compliance samples through the entire year, that includes lead, copper, nitrates, SoCs, VOCs, and much more, have all passed. So, we're all within limits set by the DNR and EPA, so another year of 100% of passing Russ worked with Sandy to get a new Dropbox, which we installed just for the election. So, the new Dropbox, which was right outside of City Hall, was basically a different shape and size that we could accept the mail-in votes. And then also, our tree planting, which we postponed in the spring due to the COVID issues. We were able to plant 54 trees this, just a few weeks ago, all done 100% funded by a DNR grant, and 54 trees is just a little bit more than double than what we normally plant every year, just with our street crew. So, we turned a negative into a positive by getting twice as many trees and having it funded 100% through the DNR. The rest is informational, Mayor, and that's it for me, unless people have questions.
Justin, thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments for Justin? Okay, thanks, Justin. Let's move over to Parks and Rec. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. We'll start with some recreation. We're still able to get a few things accomplished here during this COVID time. So, we are currently running our beginner and intermediate basketball programs. Those are done at the school, in partnership with the school, right after school. We are following all PE guidelines, implementing some other guidelines to help keep the kids safe. We have about 16, 15 to 20 kids in each program, which is lower than normal, but we're just excited to be able to offer something and be able to keep the kids safe. We had our Halloween party, a little bit different this year. Generally, we have it here at the rec center. So, this year, we had a drive-in event. We had 200 sheets for a game that we were playing, and those disappeared, plus more cars. So, we gave one to each car, so we had over 200 cars show up to that event. And then we, in conjunction with that, we had a drive-in movie, and we had 80-plus cars show up for that, too. So, definitely something we'll look forward to doing in the future, depending on where we're at with COVID. We're also preparing right now for a couple new and unique virtual events that we'll do this winter, maybe an ice fishing tournament, a medallion hunt, things like that. So, you'll see some new stuff coming from us as well in the future. In the parks, we're gearing up to do a little revamp on our Riverside Shelter with some extra money and funds that we have, so we'll be re-siding it, you know, making some changes on the inside, changing some lighting, electrical changes, just to really revamp that, make it look a lot nicer. So, we'll be working on that throughout the winter. Our court plan is finished, and I'll be bringing that to the next council meeting for adoption. So, I'll be talking about that. We'll have Trish from East Central coming in and presenting that as well. And I won't steal Sandy's thunder, she's going to talk a little bit about possible recount, and we've been working with the county that that would happen here, so just kind of gearing up for that, and I'll let Sandy cover that more. Senior Center, there's a lot of things going on down there right now. November 25th, we're going to have a drive-through turkey event downstairs. They're also working on decorating all the windows in conjunction with the youth center to decorate all the windows in the building, so that people can drive through and see the decorations. So, that will be happening as well. They're still doing activity bags every week, so there's 15 to 20 of those going out to people. If you remember, last year, they did cheer boxes, so they collected donations and put together and got names from people in the community that just need a little extra, pick-me-up, a little bit of help. So, they'll be doing that again, so they'll be looking for donations for personal care items, gift cards, and financial donations, and then looking for names of people who, you know, maybe just had a tough year and need a little bit of help. So, if you would like to donate, or know people like that, please reach out to the senior center. They also ran a promotion for Veterans Day. From Veterans Day on for the rest of the year, veterans can get free memberships to the senior center, and they've already had 17 veterans sign up with that, and many of those are new members. So, we look to keep them in the fold as far as membership moving forward at this point. Two grant things to talk about. They received an AARP Small Donor Big Impact Grant. They'll be purchasing a second aeroponic vertical, I almost said virtual again, I said that earlier, vertical garden for programming, so that they can teach about it, but they can also use it for food programs, and then they'll be going after a Helen Bader Foundation grant to continue and add on to our Rocksteady Boxing Program. And by adding on, we'll be looking to add on some virtual reality to that, and getting some virtual reality gear. So, virtual reality, a lot of people think that is just something you can do and play video games on, and it's actually being used a lot now for medical reasons, mental health reasons, and we look to incorporate that into our programming down there as well. So, that would really put us above and beyond any other senior center in the area. So, we're really hopeful to be able to get that grant as well. Otherwise, that's it.
Thank you, Andrew. Any questions, comments for Andrew? All right, we move to Chief Hozell.
Thank you, Mayor. We met with the commission on Tuesday, November 10th. One of the things that we talked about was our budget and going through our expense report. This last month, we were up quite a bit in overtime. A lot of that had to do with some mental health calls that we had, that we had to sit at the hospital while people were being evaluated and cleared. The other part of it was, we've been covering some shifts for officers or families that have been out with the COVID. And since the summer, we've actually had to fill 31 shifts from that. But from my understanding and talking with Kathy, that money is being covered by the CARES Act, so we should be okay in the overtime area. What's also attributed to our high overtime this month is the homicide that we had earlier. So, that still continues to be under investigation, and the officers are doing a great job on that. I do want to congratulate Kathy on successfully getting Jerry to come over to her office. Jerry's going to be a huge asset over to City Hall, and she's going to be really missed at the police department. We always joke that she runs the department because she knows everything in and out, but it's great that we have a good working relationship with City Hall that we can work through this together. So, we're looking at having somebody hired for that position in early or to mid-December, and in a training period of probably three to four weeks, so somebody can really understand the things that Jerry does on a daily basis for us. We also hosted the Drug Takeback Event back on October 24th. This is just a great program that the state has in regards to disposing prescription medication. We're about average with 48.3 pounds of medication. However, Wisconsin was the leading state in the country, even ahead of California and Texas. Wisconsin actually took in 89,982 pounds of unused medication during the Drug Takeback Event. Even though that we were at an average, that still does impact on the Wapaka area, because it's unused medication that's been destroyed. And we know from work in drug investigations that people drive to other communities to get what they need. That being said, Tom Grant continues to do a great job for our department since he has become the full-time drug officer. Just in the last month, he ended up with five different narcotic arrests that he did, and he just continues to surprise us with how hard and the drive that he has, and the information and what he's doing in our community to make it safer. So, can't say enough about what Tom is doing. I mean, and also, myself and Jerry Dooman were approached by Rick Graves. Some of you may know the name, but not quite sure how you know him. Rick is the owner of the paint store in Wapaka, and I did not know that before Rick got involved with the paint store, he was actually with the clergy. Rick had been a chaplain in a community that he had worked in prior to coming to Wapaka, and he approached Chief Dooman and I and talked about his involvement with our departments. And I actually met with Rick this, and it was either this morning or yesterday morning, and we talked about how the relationship would work, and Rick really wants to become involved by participating with doing ride-alongs, get to know the officers, different things that we do. And we do have some training set up for Rick that's coming up November 25th. So, we're really excited for that relationship of having him right across the street from the police department. If we need anything, Rick is there to help us out. And then the last thing that we, that we had was, we're in the final process of offering a position to an individual for full-time patrol officer. So, we're anticipating him starting early in December, and we're just finishing up the final parts of that, and the way it looks, it's, everything's going smooth. So, we should have a new officer working here shortly. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions or comments for the chief? All right, cool. Josh, let's go to you.
Hello, everyone. On the Wapaka Online side of things, we'll save that for a little bit later this meeting. We've got a couple things on the agenda. Community Media, I've talked about the survey that we had out there. I was hoping for more results, but we got about 50 back, which is an okay number to work with. My staff and I met today and just kind of did a brief overview of what we got for results and had some discussions, and we'll be getting back together a couple more times before the end of the year to kind of deep dive into that some more. Community Media's had a longstanding relationship with Winchester that predates my time with the city, Winchester Academy, and I assisted them this fall with doing a virtual series since they weren't able to be held in person, and that turned out really well. We're in discussions of helping them again with their winter series, and the work that goes into doing this is no different than us showing up to a handful of tapings each time they hold a series. IT side of things, did some upgrades on security cameras at South Park, added a few at the airport in a kind of a problem area that's hidden away from view that Beth's had some issues with, so got them taken care of. We've been continuing the process to look at software in the Community and Economic Development Department. We were really rapidly moving through that process in anticipation of maybe using some of the CARES funding for that, and just with timing and how the funding's been used, we're slowing down a little bit, and this would, I would assume, be a capital expense next year, but we've narrowed down to two packages. We had another demo today involving more staff, and hopefully, we'll kind of figure out what direction to go, but there's some really great software out there that's very user-friendly, both for our residents and our staff, to streamline processes and really improve things with handling all of our permits, licenses, and various applications, and this all ties into our strategic plan for the next few years as well. Recently met with our copier vendor, I'd say about 11 months ago is when we put in most of our new copiers, and in this first 11 months, very few issues. I've been very pleased with the relationship with this vendor and what the machines are doing for the city, and had a meeting with them just to review everything, and I think it's been going really well. That's all I've got.
Okay. Thanks, Josh. Any comments or questions for Josh? All right, let's move over to Sandy.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. My report can be found on pages 41 and 42. I do want to touch on what Justin said and thank Russ. I mentioned to him that it would be great to have a ballot Dropbox for this election, and we, after a few discussions, he took the ball and he ran with it. He went to a Wapaka machine, and they built it. So, I'm very grateful to Russ for taking the leadership in this role. Also, election final numbers. We entered, we registered 267 new voters on Election Day. Ballots cast were 3,041. Of those, 1,739 were absentee, which was a total of 89.6% voter turnout, which is really high, very good. And, excuse me?
I don't think anybody's talking.
Maybe there's feedback, I'm sorry. Also, we did issue two provisional ballots on Election Night, and only one of the voters returned their required information for their ballot to count. So, that was handled on November 6th with the chief inspectors. Also, the recount, I heard on the news tonight that all 72 counties of the state of Wisconsin have finished their canvass today by five, which was the statute requirement. Now, the next step is for the Trump campaign to file their petition and to also pay their fees, which amount to a whole entire state's worth, which is just a little bit under $8 million. So, if that all falls into place, then the WEC has three days to announce the date for us to actually hold the recount. So, we're gearing up, we're planning, we're moving ahead, we're working as though we're having a recount, even though as of, you know, today, we don't know for sure if there will be one. And Andrew mentioned, Jill has been working with him, she'd like to use our rec center for the recount. There's plenty of room, and then there's also plenty of room for any visitors, anybody who wants to watch the process and see how it works. And that's my report. Thank you.
All right, Sandy, thank you. Again, you know, we want to thank your staff for the elections. I know that Peg also helped out with that, but you and Barb and, you know, this was a trying year, obviously, with the COVID and so on, and as smooth as it ran, it was awesome in our community, so thanks for that.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on over to our city administrator, Aaron. Aaron, you got your mic on mute now?
Good, I was kind of fumbling through it anyways. All right, thank you, Mayor Smith. As you can see, my report is on your, on your screen. I just want to mention a few things, and some of it's going to be a little bit of overlap, but Kathy mentioned the CARES Act funding, that deadline for spending was today. The report's due tomorrow, as she said, and some of the things, as I put in my report, that were spent, that we spent some of that money on includes, you know, police overtime, some of the sick leave that is associated with our staff, that can be reimbursed through CARES Act money, PPE. We've got things in IT that have helped with contactless business, a number of those things. I think we got a bunch of chairs that are easily cleaned and disinfected, so everything relating to COVID, and we'll have a list of exact expenses by tomorrow afternoon, so we'll be happy to share that with council. But it is good, we are happy to say that all of the money is accounted for, and there is- And there is, we were planning, as we were getting closer to that, uh, upper ninety-six, ninety-eight thousand dollars, if we didn't have that exact amount, we can repurpose city administrator, uh, dollars or wages to go towards, uh, basically as a, um, redeployment as emergency management director during the last year. So that's always a, an opportunity there. Um, Grant Rider, he's been mentioned a few times. Greg has been doing fantastic. Again, obviously, he's with the city, the chamber, the school district. Um, he has helped the senior center out. I know he's been working with the library. I'm working with him right now on some possible CDBG funding opportunities that could go through for rental assistance that's tied to COVID, um, challenges for people. Uh, so we're just working through that. He's gonna deliver the letter of intent and then I'll include other staff as we get closer. No commitments are made or anything like that, but that's a big dollar amount that we would work with cap services on to possibly, uh, work through a program for the area. So I look forward to working with him on that. Um, updating committees, you'll see, we've got a number of committees that we hope to bring forward. I've been speaking with Mayor Smith about this. Um, and most of the committees are just either people have resigned, um, or maybe they're just outdated because they haven't met in a while. For example, Board of Appeals. Um, and then the other one is we're trying to reconstitute the Community Development Authority and make sure that all of our members on those positions meet the state statutory requirements. So we're looking at Community Development Authority, five positions, Board of Appeals, two positions, Plan Commission, one, Airport Board, one, Parks and Recreation Board, one. Uh, we, I'm in the middle of contacting people. Uh, hopefully we can get, uh, some commitments over the next week, so I can bring all of those forward on December first. Uh, the Theta Care Community Leaders Meeting was already mentioned. Uh, that was something that was held last Thursday, seven forty-five AM. I was able to jump on that meeting and it was a good meeting. It was their CFO, COO, CEO, and then nursing staff were kinda the main presenters. Um, and it, they, they painted a, a pretty tough picture as far as what Theta Care's, uh, dealing with right now. Uh, at one time, I think they had three beds left in the entire system. Uh, the COO, um, mentioned that it was, you know, he's been in healthcare for forty-three years, he hasn't seen, uh, volume like this ever in his career come through a hospital. Um, but they are, uh, so they're working hard and a credit to all of those workers. Um, also kind of on the COVID note, Josh Warner's helping, uh, the Vets Home in Bethany. Um, there, we have weekly meetings with them and they've kinda made a plea, um, specifically the Vets Home with the tough spot that they've been in lately. Um, you know, we're at high enough levels to where they won't be able to see their family members, uh, during the holiday season. If we were dropped, if we could drop our levels in cases, that actually opens up the possibility for them to do that. Um, but Josh is helping them put together just some testimonials and coordinating with Tammy over at the Vets Home and Shelley at Bethany. So thanks, Josh, for that. Uh, let's see here, evaluations, evaluations, I know, we talked a little bit, department heads this morning, on a department head meeting that we will be working through those probably right after Thanksgiving through the month of December. Um, the software timeline that Josh mentioned, uh, he did mention that we were gonna look at using CARES Act money when it became apparent that, uh, we weren't, that we were gonna spend the entire ninety-eight thousand dollars. Uh, we, we, we kinda just pumped the brakes on that. We wanted to make sure we put ourselves in a good position and, uh, had, had a, a, a good process, included everyone in that process, um, and didn't pull it, that's, I mean, that's a, that's a change that could impact, you know, you don't wanna change software systems more times than you have to, because it's a lot of work. Um, and Josh and Elizabeth and Rhonda have done a good job at setting up demos. Um, just included Sandy and Barb for the first time today and Jerry, um, as we included some licensing things. And we're looking forward to getting their input as we move forward. Um, I think that's about all, except for, I just wanna kinda just mention a, a thank you to, Mayor mentioned it, uh, not, you know, the elections ran pretty smooth for the, the two elections that we had this year. Um, it was pretty amazing what they were able to accomplish. Uh, we had great participation from our poll workers. There was many municipalities that had to rely on the National Guard, um, much more than we did. And that's just a credit to the people that are willing to work, uh, for that, obviously very important day. Thank you to Sandy and Barb and Cherry and everyone for that. Peg, I know you worked, thank you. Um, and then just wanted to, you know, I continue to have operational conversations daily with department heads about different things, different things that are, are, that are impacting our staff. Um, and when you come to work every day and, and there's, there seems to be a change in how things are working with your staff or your operations, that can take a toll on people. And I recognize that and we recognize that. Uh, and I just can't give enough credit to, uh, our staff for being, um, really as strong as they have during this time. Uh, and, and I, uh, it's, it's incredibly appreciated by me. So, uh, that's about all I have to say. Thanks, Mayor.
Aaron, thank you. Anybody else have any, uh, questions or comments for, uh, Aaron? All right, uh, let's move on then to unfinished business. We have, uh, ordinance number zero-nine twenty-twenty. This is an ordinance repealing and recreating chapter seventeen of the zoning code. And this is, in essence, the, uh, second reading of that. Um, Aaron, you wanna hit on anything there?
Uh, the only things I'll hit on, Mayor, are that we have not received any public comment or input in the last, uh, couple of weeks since the last meeting. Um, this is the second reading and then this could go into effect. I, I do wanna mention, you know, this is a long document. Just a reminder, we are going through a second kinda round of changes once the comp plan gets updated. So if things get missed or if something gets noticed in between those two things, we can address it at that point. Um, and even after the second round, it's not like, uh, this stuff is in concrete and can never be changed. Um, but, uh, those are the only couple of things, Mayor, that I wanted to touch on. Um, otherwise, I'd open it up for any questions.
Okay. Uh, not hearing any, we would need a motion to approve this, this ordinance then.
Olson to approve. Kealan second.
Motion by Olson, second by Kealan, that we approve of ordinance number zero-nine twenty-twenty. This is an ordinance repealing and recreating chapter seventeen of the zoning code. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Hackett?
Sandy, say that again, I, it was hard to hear.
Hackett?
Here, here, aye.
Chestnut?
Here? Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Ellen Kealan?
Aye.
Scott Brachatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten Eyes? Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Uh, next up, we have, under new business, we have, uh, uh, permission for Wapak Online to apply for a fiscal year twenty-twenty-one State of Public Service Commission broadband expansion grant. Josh, that's you.
All right, well, um, as I've been talking about the past couple of months, there's been a few projects Wapak Online's been working at, working on, um, some I've talked more in depth about to council, some I haven't. And just based on the timing of things, um, the opportunity to apply for grant funding along with the timeline of these potential projects, uh, worked out really well that it's coinciding. Um, we're looking at three different, uh, projects. Um, the first one is to replace our fifty-foot city, uh, fifty-foot tower at City Hall, um, with a tower ranging a hundred to a hundred and ten feet. And there's a few reasons for that. Um, our line of sight between City Hall and the Shamble Water Tower, which is very key to how our system operates, is slowly getting obstructed more and more each year. Um, with all our upgrades and expansions, the Shamble Water Tower is very critical to our operation. And, um, we need to get more capacity over there. The equipment that would allow us to get that capacity plus future proof it is a lot larger and heavier than our standard equipment. So combined with the line of sight issues and the equipment needed, the tower we have here isn't adequate for that. Um, a second issue with that tower is I would like to upgrade our link between City Hall and the police department to the same system we're using between City Hall and the rec center, which is about as good as you can get for a fixed wireless link between both buildings. And we've got trees in the way that the new technology we would use for that, um, will not work through at all. And then the third reason we're looking at getting a taller tower at City Hall is the, um, future building of a public works facility. Um, at least from the technology side, when that, uh, facility, um, when, when the planning starts for that and when that comes to petition, um, the big technology question for me is how do we get that building directly connected to City Hall to be on the same phone system, the same access control system, to use the same servers, to be tied into everything we're doing? So, um, we think that height of that tower will take care of a number of issues for both online and the IT side of things. Um, another project we're looking at is just erecting a sixty-foot tower in the East Gate subdivision. We more than likely locate that next to the lift station that the city has out there. And that would be a tower just like the one we currently have behind Say Hall, just kinda have a small TV tower. Um, we've got, I wanna say about dozen or so internet customers out there. There are no other internet providers, um, aside from cellular and satellite. Um, so Wapak Online is it. More houses are being sold, more lots are being sold, more people are moving in. And right now, we have some equipment mounted on someone's roof. And that setup's not adequate to add a lot more, uh, too many more customers out there. So we're looking to get the infrastructure in place that we could serve every household out there if they desired to have our service. Um, I know some of the residents have had conversations with some of the landline internet providers and there is no interest from them, uh, to expanding into that area. So that's something we'd like to take advantage of. And the third project we're looking at, um, back in August, city council approved entering into a land lease agreement on some property east of Manawa. So the third, uh, project would be moving forward and building the tower on that land. And like I said, just based on discussions we're having and, uh, different goals and different needs and just the timing on all of this, you know, by the time we got that land lease done, um, you know, it kind of pointed to the soonest we could consider that tower would be next spring. So we'd like to apply for State of Wisconsin Public Service Commission broadband grant, um, to help cover the, the costs of this project. Um, we'd probably find out, uh, the, the applications due December first and it sounds like we'd find out in February, um, if we're being awarded a grant. And what I'm, uh, one of, one of the struggles we, Ralph and I have had so far on putting the application together is we're finding it very difficult for tower companies to actually call us back when we try contacting them and leaving voicemails. Um, we've talked to three so far. One of them is, uh, more of a local individual and there's a little apprehension on that one, just due to some information, but that would be the, uh, you know, least expensive one we've talked to. And then I, and we talked to another company of the Madison area in which, if they turned out to be the right one, Ralph and I would kind of be acting as general contractors on this project. And then I talked to a firm that specializes in working with wireless ISPs. They pretty much will, are, are all-inclusive on doing the tower work. Um, and just got some ballpark, ballpark quotes from them, just so we had numbers to put into a budget for this project. The firm that specializes in working with wireless ISPs had the highest cost, um, so we went with those numbers. And the total project, kinda rough, would be an eighty-seven thousand dollar project. Um, and that's without going out and doing an RFP and trying to, you know, find the best value, that's just rough, you know, very rough estimates. Um, however, proposing to cover the cost, this should be, be awarded a grant. Um, we'd use about forty-two thousand dollars from Wapak Online's cash reserves. Um, we'd use twenty-five hundred dollars from the IT credit card rebate fund. So when we use our city credit cards to pay our expenses, the city gets a percentage back and that goes into a fund that we can use for special projects. And we'd contribute some money toward this, um, since one of the towers would also help the IT department. Um, since I'm salaried, doesn't matter how many hours I put in, um, we'd consider my time in kind toward this project. Um, public works may be off, able to offer some assistance on this with maybe putting the concrete bases in for towers or some of the, uh, excavation work. And until we get to the point with this project that we have a, a vendor selected to build the towers and we know what time of year it's happening and what public work schedule's like, we can't really determine today what that would look like or put a monetary value on that, but that might be another, um, contribution the city can do. And then, uh, we're asked for the grant for about forty-two thousand dollars, um, which would be about a forty-seven, forty-eight percent match from the state. Um, got a pretty lengthy draft copy of, uh, application for this project and I'm not gonna go through it. I think kinda the memo gives the overview of what the project is and the costs and the commitments, but if anyone has any questions about the application, I'll answer those or go into that in detail.
Thanks, Josh. Uh, anybody have any comments on that? So what, what Josh is asking for is to give him permission to go ahead and apply for this grant. Obviously, if we don't get a grant, uh, you know, we wouldn't be going forward with, uh, this project, but, uh, or projects, uh, that he has included here. But, uh, it, it, you know, it, it obviously is something that, uh, we would like to move forward with. So, uh, we would like to see a motion to, uh, approve this request.
I'll make a motion to approve this request.
I'll second, this is Lori.
Okay, motion by Hackett, second by Chestnut, that we, uh, give permission for Wapak Online to apply for a fiscal twenty-twenty-one State of Wisconsin Public Service Commission broadband expansion grant. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Hackett?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Ellen Kealan?
Aye.
Scott Brachatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Tomi Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten Eyes? Motion carried.
Thanks.
All right, thanks, Andy. Josh, you wanna just move on to the agreement with Spectrum?
Yeah, um, and working on next year's budget for Wapak Online, I got together with Ralph just to see if anything stood out or if he saw any needs I needed to consider. And he kinda let me know, probably within the next year, we need to consider upgrading our bandwidth, um, that we get from Spectrum to serve the system. And the guys have been busy, I wanna say, the past two or three months, um, with more people working from home, doing school from home. We've had a lot of customers asking for more speed, needing upgrades. And we've made a number of upgrades on our system to be able to accommodate that. Um, and I talked about needing a better link between City Hall and the Shamble Water Tower. We can't do that today, but we, one of the things we recently did is a, um, for us, a pretty major investment into a system called Air Fiber that's running between City Hall and the Mount Tom Water Tower and the Mount Tom Communications Tower that, um, huge capacity and really made some improvements. The guys, uh, changed the routes of a couple of our POPs to get them going through that system and made some other upgrades. And what went from maybe sometime in the next six to eight months that we need to consider turned into we need more bandwidth, uh, right now. Um, we have five-hundred megabits per second symmetrical from Spectrum. And I've been told the past couple of weeks, at the high points in the evening when our system's being stressed, we're hitting that five-hundred. Um, Spectrum's next level we can move to is one gigabit per second symmetrical. Um, so I reached out to our sales rep to get the pricing, well, initially for the budget process. And, uh, the really cool news is we can double our bandwidth for a twenty-six dollar a month increase, uh, which shows how competitive the pricing is on bandwidth. Um, Spectrum's been excellent to work with. Whenever we've needed to upgrade, they've always allowed us to replace our current agreement with a new agreement, um, with whatever the then current rates are. Um, so we're looking, looking for, uh, permission from Say Council to replace our current agreement with Spectrum with a new three-year agreement, uh, for one gigabit per second internet at a cost of- And the really cool news is we can double our bandwidth for a $26 a month increase, which shows how competitive the pricing is on bandwidth. Spectrum's been excellent to work with. Whenever we've needed to upgrade, they've always allowed us to replace our current agreement with a new agreement with whatever the then-current rates are. So we're looking, looking for permission from Say Council to replace our current agreement with Spectrum with a new three-year agreement for 1 gigabit per second internet at a cost of $2,325 per month. Any questions?
Paul Mayo.
I'm sorry, Paul, did you make a motion?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a second?
Second, Martin.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mayo, second by Martin, that we approve entering into a new three-year agreement with Spectrum for 1 gigabit of fiber internet, replacing our current agreement of 500 megabytes of internet. And that was for a cost of $3,250?
Nope, a lot cheaper, $2,325. Don't scare me with that high number.
Sorry about that. $2,325. Again, as I always say, I'm really good with numbers, so take my word for it. $2,325. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pachetzky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Demetri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Josh, thanks. Let's go to Justin. This has to do with a cropping agreement with the city and Kathy Nichol.
Thank you, Mayor. My memo can be seen on page 276 of the packet, followed by a draft agreement, and then an exhibit showing the land that we're talking about. So just west of our airport, just beyond the runway, city owns 13 acres of land, and we just lease it out for cropping, basically because it has to stay down in order to accommodate the flight path of airplanes coming and going. Out there, Kathy Nichol owns land adjacent to this property. She's been in this agree, or we've been in agreement with her to crop this land. And like the last one, she pays us basically as a lease payment each year for this land. Basically, this agreement from past years, there is in the wording that allows us to renew it at the discretion of both us, the city, and Kathy Nichol. Basically, with the last cropping agreement that was put out for proposals, the price that's on here is in line with what we've seen receiving those proposals. And seeing how Kathy has property adjacent to this one, she does a good job managing it. She does special things for us if we ask as far as keeping the varmints away, which might interfere with planes taking off and landing. So I guess in summary, she's been a good partner. This agreement seems to be good for the city as far as the cost and having somebody out there to help us with some of the airplanes coming and going. So with that, I'll quit talking and looking for council to approve this agreement.
All right, anybody want to make a motion to approve?
This is Lori, move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Peterson, that we approve of entering into a cropping agreement with Kathy Nichol for 13 acres of cropland at $55 an acre from 2021 through 2025. Discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pachetzky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Demetri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Justin, you have a resolution there. Do you want to go ahead and read that, please?
You want me to read it word for word or just kind of talk about it?
I'll leave it up to you.
I'll just talk about it because this resolution, or not this, is Act 1, but has been brought to council for a number of years, starting with my predecessor, John Edelbeck, recognizing our snowplow drivers in the city of Waupeka. What they do for us, serve the community, is a tremendous asset for everyone who lives and commutes through and within the city. Clearing snow is one, it's a thankless job. Our plow truck drivers wake up at midnight, report to work sometimes by 1, 2 a.m., just so that the roads are clear by the time we're waking up and starting our days. And we're none the wiser that, you know, inches of snow have been removed from our roads. It's a huge safety benefit for us. It also has a huge economic impact to the city. So this is just a little nod, little tip of the cap to them of saying thank you for all they've done, adjusting their plans daily, weekly, just for the benefit of the community. So every year, I'd like to keep bringing this back. And today is declared Snowfighter Appreciation Day by the city with your approval.
All right, so we are just looking for a motion to, to approve this resolution and place it on file.
Move to approve, Mary.
Second.
Motion by Fair, second by Hagan? That's on, right?
It was.
Okay, thanks, Paul. To approve Resolution Number 1471, this is 2020 Resolution Supporting Snowfighters Appreciation Day. Sandy, you looking for a roll call here, too?
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pachetzky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Demetri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, Justin, thank you. Next up, we have License Report Number 1518. This is an operator's license. You can find that on page 281. We have two names on there. Of course, they're all pending. Payment of money owed to the city of Waupeka. We would need a motion to approve.
Keeland motion to approve.
Motion by Keeland.
Lori, second.
Second by Chestnut, that we approve License Report 1518. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
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 Against? Abstained? Motion carried. License Report 1519, that's for taxicab drivers. We have one person on there for renewal. Same thing, pending background checks and payments of any fines. Do we have a motion?
So move, Lori.
Motion by Chestnut? Second by Fair, that we approve of License Report 1519. Any discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right, next up, we have communications and recommendations of the mayor. Just remember that we do have a public, or a committee of the whole meeting right after this, so stick with us once we finish this meeting. If I forget, just want to wish any hunters out there to be safe out there and good luck. And also wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving this year. Anybody else have anything for the good of the meeting? Need a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second. Fair.
Motion by Hagan, second by Fair, that we adjourn until the next regular council meeting on Tuesday, December 1st, 2020, subject to call. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. We're adjourned at 7:41 p.m. Anybody need a break?
Please, five minutes.
All right, so let's, 7:46, we're going to restart the meeting, so take a little break. I'll go ahead and call this committee of the whole meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, November 17, 2020. We have the, all of the council members are in attendance, and all of the staff that was at the prior city council meeting are all in attendance at this time, too. You have just one item on the agenda, so we'd be looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
This is Lori, move to approve.
I heard one before, Lori. Who was that, Dave Peterson? No?
Steve Hackett.
Okay, sorry. Motion by Hackett, second by Chestnut, that we approve of the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carried. All right, so we got fiscal year 2021 budget. Kathy, I, this is your game. Kathy, if you're talking, you're on mute. Um, I don't, where is she? Let me give her, let me give her a call, so I don't know if she got booted off or what. How about those Packers? I got to fill it somehow, guys.
Yeah.
Yeah, they didn't play real well, but they still won.
What about the Bucks?
Yeah, that's strange. I mean, what do they have in the draft next week? And that's, that's, this is really a crazy year.
Yeah, three top draft choices? That's giving up a lot.
Yeah, no kidding.
Hey, guys, Kathy's locked up a little bit. She's trying to log out and log back on.
Okay. In the meantime, hopefully you guys have your packet up for the committee of the whole. It should start with the agenda, and then the second page will have the 2021 budget worksheet levy limit on top there. I know she also sent out a kind of a report on just telling you things that are happening this year and how that's affecting the presentation or the budget for 2021. And that's in a whole separate PDF file that you have. So if you can reference both of those things as she goes through this and get through this. We do, this is a committee of the whole meeting, so remember that we're just taking a look at this tonight, but we do have to have final approval at our next city council meeting, which is December, what is it, December?
First.
December 1st. So, I mean, that's our last day. The next day, we have to have it over to the county. So we're going to have to make sure that when we go into the December 1st meeting, that we feel comfortable with, with the 2021 budget. All right, I think Kathy should be on. Kathy, can you hear us?
Yeah.
All right. All right, Kathy, I did some filler here, and so they're all on that page two that says 2021 budget worksheet levy limit, and I think that's what you have up, don't you, Aaron?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Kathy, you're going to have to get closer to your mic for us.
Is that better?
A little better.
Not really.
Yeah.
Let me turn, let me turn up the volume.
Can you hear?
Pump up the volume.
Give me a second, I'll put a different mic on. Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah, that sounds good. Don't yell at us.
I promise not to. So the levy limit worksheet is really the worksheet that I have to start off with first to doing the budget, because this is the legal limit that our tax levy can go up. So starting with the worksheet is that we were, we received a 1.5% net new construction, which allows our levy to go up a whole $33,710. And then the adjustments that can be made are down on Section D. Aaron, if you want to move down, is, these are the adjustments. And right now, the only adjustment that we're taking is the amount of the debt service levy that we feel will cover the principal and interest that's due next year on our general obligation debt for the city. So that's the adjustment that is allowed. And really, that debt service levy is the only portion staff recommends that if you make any changes, you make it to that. Because that amount goes in and out each year, Aaron, you can move up to the top again, is that really before that levy on line nine, you only have 2.2 in real levy that you can, that you can levy for. So if they let you take the debt service out because that fluctuates each year, and so that's the number that you really can only adjust. If you start with playing around with the levy before the debt service, you would have to make up more net new construction in the future to be able to raise your levy any more than what legally you can, unless you go to a referendum. So right now, we're looking at a total levy of $3,318,265. And so if you go to the next screen, that shows you where our levy has been over the last almost nine years of where we've been. And that levy amount is really only about a little more than 1% because of the debt service levy in there. So, and it shows that we've been keeping it fairly stable, and that's good for the taxpayer. It doesn't bounce around and have a lot of impact to the taxpayer as far as the levy amount is concerned. But when you get to the next screen, the tax calculate rate calculate- the tax calculate rate calculation, um, drives a lot of things. And, um, these are the levies that we have so far, and it includes the TIF levy, um, that's included in the amounts to be levied. Um, the, the biggest numbers that I want to show you, other than the city's, um, portion of the tax rate of, um, three point seven six percent, is that, um, a few things have happened this year. Uh, we've lost again six point two million dollars of assessed value. Now, the assessed value is what, uh, the ta- total grow- total tax levy is, uh, spread across on the tax bill. So, um, this here amount, um, shows that even though the levy's going up only seventy-seven point eight thousand dollars in gross levy, um, it, the rate is going up because the base that it's spread across is smaller. So, we went from four hundred and fourteen million to four hundred and eight, and that has to do with the adjustment, uh, for the Kmart and the state's manufacturing assessments. So, um, the assessed value, um, a lot of that number, it, we don't have any control over, um, but it did go down one point five percent, which is a lot. Um, our, on the other hand, um, I have, uh, also calculated that the, um, our equalized value went up three point two four percent. It increased our equalized value, the, the number that the state uses to allow us, if you were going to compare us with New London or Clintonville, you would use the equalized value and the equalized tax rate. And that, we increased by fourteen point six million, um, because the, according to the state, our property values had, uh, increased a lot more than what our assessed value is, which you can see by our, um, F M V fair market value percentage. Um, and so our, really our equal, our equalized tax rate, um, has gone down. Um, but, uh, uh, I, I don't have that information, um, on this screen, I just kinda calculated it later on tonight, um, during the, during the, uh, council meeting. Um, but on, right now, we're looking at with the gross levy, because we do not have the rest of the numbers, uh, on a hundred thousand dollar home, that the taxes would go up, uh, fifty-eight dollars, um, and that's a two point three five percent increase, um, in the, in that gross levy tax amount on a hundred thousand dollar home. Any, you want me to keep going, or do you want to ask questions? Um, on the general fund, um, again, our revenues are staying, uh, pretty, um, pre- forecasting to be pretty, um, um, normal than, and, and still trying to be conservative. Um, we've had some changes in, in different revenues, and the same thing with the expenditures, each, each, um, each portion of the expenditures are, uh, staying within that, um, five-one, five-two, uh, um, amount that, um, i- in prior years, uh, we've been either the actuals gone down, uh, than what budget, and that's when we have a surplus, but, um, again, our, our budget and, and what we're looking at for twenty twenty, uh, is, uh, just a slight increase. And here's the general fund summary. Um, we're looking at intergovernmental revenues, uh, with the tax rate, uh, to go up. Um, we have a little increase in some other of the taxes. Uh, the inter- inter, uh, governmental revenues, those are, as our state aids are going up. Uh, we're looking at a decrease in some of the licenses and permits. Uh, mostly that is attributable to the change in the, um, uh, cable franchise fee that we collect. Um, the state is reduced the amount that the cable providers have to charge for franchise fees, and so they're making us whole in the intergovernmental revenues, and we're losing it in the, uh, licenses and permits. Um, we're looking at, uh, a flat, um, uh, projection for fines and forfeitures. Uh, we are gonna probably be down this year, uh, due to loss of parking revenue, um, but, um, we, we hope to, to, uh, rebound next year, uh, even with the start of, and there might be that with the start of, uh, the Main Street project, um, again, um, a little, uh, higher than what, what maybe realized. Uh, public charges for services, just kinda looking at, um, some of the, um, uh, charges, uh, for services that we might not receive. Um, the intergovernmental revenues i- are for, um, uh, the school district and, um, the recycling district, uh, charges off, uh, and miscellaneous revenue is probably the biggest one because, um, interest rates aren't as, uh, high as we, we were invested in. Uh, so my reinvestment of my two percent, um, investments are now at about like point five, maybe a half percent, not even. Um, so very, very low, uh, we've been there before. Uh, other, um, sources, the one point two million are the transfers in from the hotel motel tax, uh, the utilities, uh, for administration, the TIF districts for administration, um, and that's where we're, um, we're still gonna stay about, we're gonna stay the same, our estimate is. They, um, any questions on the revenues? Anybody? I'll keep going. The mayor and council, uh, that's an increase for the five, um, elected officials that are up for reelection or newer, newly elected officials. Um, the change in the amount, uh, for the stipend. Administration, uh, is pretty much, and it shouldn't be a hundred percent, it should be something else, my formula is off on that, sorry. Um, the, is, uh, uh, estimate for, uh, Aaron's posi- uh, department, or actually, he just his position, uh, for administration, uh, there's been change for, uh, of the two percent raise there. Um, clerk and elections, uh, we're looking at, uh, moving, uh, the deputy, uh, clerk into this position this year, and, uh, an increase in some of the election costs, um, going forward with the, um, move to more absentee ballots, uh, there's more printing, uh, more postage, more processing. Um, so we're looking at, uh, increasing in, in elections. Um, I T communications is, uh, fully funding, uh, the, uh, tech, uh, full-time position be- that's going to be shared between online, uh, and, uh, the general fund. So that's, uh, in there. Um, the finance department is the loss of the, of Barb's, uh, um, position a- and some adjustments, uh, for, uh, software costs. So, there's a decrease in the finance department. The legal services, um, we're budgeting the same amount. Um, we feel that the amounts there, uh, are sufficient for what, uh, we have for the need for legal services. Um, community development, um, there's an increase, uh, based on, um, Aaron's, uh, projection for use of, uh, contracted services. Um, so it's not a full, uh, increase in, um, a- across the board for, for, um, personnel costs. So, we've made some adjustments, uh, in that department. Uh, city hall, again, um, adjustments, uh, for personnel costs, uh, attributable to, um, the cleaning and, um, uh, city hall supplies, um, we're, we're the same, the operations costs were the same, it's pretty much on personnel. Uh, other general government are, is the biggest increase is probably in, um, some of our, um, insurance policies. Our, our property insurance has gone up, um, probably because the fund is getting more claims. Uh, this is the third year that, that, um, um, municipal, um, property insurance fund is in, in existence, and so it's been seeing some higher claims, uh, with the weather, um, that we've had in, in the state. Um, humane society and cemetery, this is pretty much the cemetery's, uh, salary increases. Uh, and the police station is, uh, again, an adjustment with, um, uh, the cleaning staff, uh, wages in that, um, in that department. Uh, the police department, uh, the impact of, um, the second year, the second half of the, um, uh, drug officer, uh, and, uh, just some of the depart- uh, the change in the salaries, a lot of the, um, older, higher-paid officers have left, um, the department, and we've got younger, newer officers, and so there, there is, um, some savings with, um, the change in personnel, and that's why you're st- you're only seeing a sixty-eight thousand, uh, increase in the fire, in the police department. Um, EMS, um, the biggest, uh, hit for, uh, the fire in EMS is the EMS contract. Uh, we're looking at an additional amount, uh, for, uh, EMS. And Public Works is just the, um, salaries across the board, um, that, that, uh, should, uh, with the two percent, uh, and some benefit adjustments. And again, um, some of the, uh, other, older positions, um, being replaced with, uh, lower-paying, young, uh, lower-paying entry-level positions. Uh, park and rec, uh, again, um, we're looking at the, the, taking off to the, um, youth program fund, uh, some of the dollars, and, uh, just, uh, adjustments that way, uh, that we're seeing that it, it's, it should be, uh, uh, budgeted correctly, uh, and, um, so there's a slight decrease there. Uh, parks and beaches, again, it's, um, salaries and wages. And, um, no change in the historical society, um, allocation of sixteen thousand dollars, uh, and, uh, um, civic promotions, uh, the fireworks for next year, the, uh, sister city, um, donation and, um, the farmers, some of the farmers market expenses, so those are all, um, those all stay the same. The transfer to, uh, other funds is what we're gonna be transferring out of the, for the tax levy, uh, to the airport fund, the taxi fund, the library and debt service. And my number that I'm trying to make sure that we stay within the expenditure restraint program is my contingency number, uh, and that would be, uh, what we would be pulling from fund balance, um, should we use it, but it's there for budget purposes only, uh, to qualify for the expenditure restraint program. Any questions?
Yeah, um, I have a question.
Okay.
I'm just looking at the, uh, the police department line item, and it's, uh, far and away the largest. Is there a way that, uh, we could see a breakdown of that? So we can get a better sense of how that, uh, is happening?
I can send it to you, Dimitri.
Okay, thank you.
Um.
Kathy, it's, it's, suffice to say, though, that, that's labor.
Oh, yeah, the.
It's all, it's all labor.
It's all labor, there's hardly any, uh, of, it, the amount that if you looked at for equipment, and I can break it down, um, for you and show you that this is strictly, uh, labor overtime, um, and, uh, it's, and it's not, and probably from Chief Ozell is that it, it's, he's only have, going up sixty-eight thousand with his two percent, uh, increase in his labor costs and, and bene- you know, and the, and resulting benefits, and it's because he's cut other places in his budget as far as supplies and equipment that he normally purchases, to make sure that he's, he's well within his, you know, of, of a budget that we can, we can work with. I probably spend the most time with him working on, because he is the largest department, as far as budget dollars are concerned. But I can, I can provide you with, um, with detail on, on the police department. If not, um, isn't it, wasn't it in, uh, Chief Ozell's, um, police and fire commission packet?
Yes.
So, it's, it is, it's available there, um.
Kathy, if I can add something? Kathy, one of the reasons why that's up more from last year is because of that drug officer, we added another position, and that's being, um, last year, I believe, was that fund balance? Dave paid for that, now that's being added into our budget this year as a full-time, that's my understanding.
Right, but it wasn't, um, fund balance paid it at the bottom, but, you know, the, for the impact of the whole budget, but as far as, it was only half-funded, uh, for, um, for the year. And we also, um, knew that we had some other movement with, with positions, and so that's probably why, um, if you would have had, um, not had a change in positions, this po- dollar amount would probably be higher because you have lower, um, um, salaried officers starting out, so it's not, um, it, it doesn't look that big of a, it, an increase, but it is an increase because, um, it is seventeen sworn officers, so. Got it? Um.
Kathy?
So, yeah.
The, it's Lori, um, on the fire department, that EMS, now that is the Gold Cross requested increase this year? For?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um, let's see. You wanna go to the next page, Aaron? Again, the, the, um, expenditure restraint, restraint program provides the city with about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of state aid, so if we don't qualify for that, it's gone. And until you qualify again, um, and meet the target, it, it can be hard to, to m- make that, that number. So, we have been making sure that we are one-tenth of a percent less, it's our budget less debt service. So, um, they, uh, we have to be under two point three percent. And so this year, we are, um, plugging it with, so that three hundred and forty-five thousand would be in. And so this year we are plugging it with, so that 345,000 would be in contingency. And that's that hole that we kind of keep open so that if something in our special revenue fund or our budget goes up more than their allowable amount, we can, we can adjust this. One of the things that I was telling Aaron was is that, let's say we had the airport fund that's no longer more than 50% of other revenue sources. And now we've got more than 50% in tax levy. It doesn't qualify under the accounting rules as a special revenue fund and it has to come back into the general fund. So that, that, that 345 goes down. And if I had to bring it back in, I wouldn't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't qualify for expenditure restraint in a year. And we'd lose $175,000 worth of state aid. And then you are cutting programs because now you don't have state aid. And you can't raise your levy to make up for it. So I've been making sure that we're in compliance with the, with the, the program. And it shows that if we did use all 345,000, we would be under a million in it for fund balance. So we'd be way under the amount that we would have in our fund balance policy if we used all that money. Okay, next slide. Hotel motel, I'm staying flat. I'm being optimistic that the hotel motels in our area come back online, especially this summer, this coming summer. I also am hoping that we can work on getting a tax tourist area type of agreement with the surrounding towns so that we can all share in the amount of online revenues that are being reserved online. That's that 8%, you know, that, that 3% is coming to all of us in, in the area. We're still waiting for legislation to make the online providers give us more detail. Right now, they just give us a dollar amount and saying, here, this is what we rented in Waupaca 54981. And their, their assumption is that everything that they're renting is the city of Waupaca. So we're working with the towns and the Convention and Visitors Bureau to, to look at options for, for expanding our tax base to include the B and Bs, Air B and Bs. And again, the fund, backup, Aaron, the, the fund balance in this fund is being used. It was, there was an accounting error that I discovered back in 2016 by my predecessor and the auditors. And we're going to, we've been sharing this with the Convention and Visitors Bureau for doing the wayfinding study. So there is about 75,000 that we'll be looking at for putting up wayfinding signs around the city, is what my projection is. And so that's where we're, we're going with that, that fund balance in that fund. Okay, next. It's the airport fund. This fund has been steadily exceeding its revenues. As you can see, and we are going to have to really look at the airport fund next year to see what either new revenues or expenditures need to be looked at. A lot of it has to do with the fuel sales being down. I know we got 30,000 this year for COVID from the Bureau of Aeronautics. But I still think that we're not going to make targets. And we'll need to, again, look at adding funds to it. And that's where I've, are looking for a transfer to this fund of an additional 23,750 from the general fund just to, just to balance this fund. And assume that we have some inventory of fuel at the end of the year. So that's the airport fund. Transit fund. This is finally, finally getting there. Thanks to the federal government realizing that rural transits systems need assistance. And we have been told by the Department of Transportation that we will have enough funds to cover our operations for 2020 and 2021 with the amount that they did receive for rural transit. So I'm happy to say that I think that this fund is going to be in really good shape at the end of this year and, and hopefully next year. And we can work with the vets home with getting, hopefully be able to get them out, their residents out again and start using our taxi service. So there's nothing I have for, for transit. I stuck in the inland lakes because I just want to, even though they're, we've done them. I, they, we kind of add them in as a component unit. So I, I've added them in. They're 10,000. We are not looking at expending any money next year for them. So they'll start building up that fund balance so that they can do some more invasive species and put their, their, their plan to, that they've worked on this year in, into effect with improvements going forward. Okay. Library fund, this is the information that I received from the library. Again, they're, they're getting the same amount of revenues that tax levy from the city. And they're seeing an increase in their intergovernmental revenues with the county. And a reduction in their public charges for services. Other than that, I, I see, there's nothing that we, the council can do with the library fund's budget. We just have to make sure that we're allocating tax levy to them for operations. Next slide. The adult recreation program, again, this fund was hurt pretty bad this year. It's not looking, it's probably breaking even. So, but it, if it gets back on track again, I think that there's a, you know, there's still some money in there to, to continue to operate it going forward. So there's nothing, it's pretty much, it's self-sufficient. Whatever takes in, in revenue, that's how it operates. Next slide.
Yeah, there's a, there's like a five second delay, Kathy.
The youth program fund, this again was talked at the park board. And what we're looking at is pretty much keeping it stable. There's just an adjustment in the part-time where they were allocated from the youth center to the youth programs. Otherwise, we're looking at a 0% increase in this and hopefully it gets back on track next year. The towns have been informed that we'll be looking at what money may be left over. It looks like right now, I'm estimating about 44,000. Not sure what the park board would decide as to how it would, would handle that fund balance once the audit's completed as either a refund to the towns and the city because we do provide tax levy directly to it. That we would either break it up or, or what. But right now, we're asking the towns and the city to, on this fund, to just stay status quo. It won't hurt them for levy limit if they continue to budget. Because if we told them to reduce it and then bring it back, they'd have a hard time trying to bring it back up without cutting some other service or amount in their, in their budgets going forward. So we're cognizant of the impact of the, the intergovernmental agreements that we have with the towns in this fund. On the debt service fund. The good thing is, is I think we're doing good. I've looked at, with this last issue of 2020, we definitely reduced a projection that we have for debt service. But again, to, to help keep the tax rate down, we are using the savings that we have from our refinancing to buy down the debt service levy. So this is the amount, if you look at the fund balance in, in there, has been for the savings that we've had in, in our refinancing our existing debt over the, over the years. Next year, the buy down is, if that, if we use it, would be, and keep the tax levy the same, is that we are going to be transferring in 320,000 of tax, of tax increment from TIF III to start paying off the advance that the debt service fund did in the early part of the TIF where it needed to have city tax levy to meet its debt service requirements. I still would like to continue to, my projection is to continue to build up that fund. And if you want to give me control, I have a budget.
Can you request control? Then I should have something coming up here, I think.
Request control.
Should have it.
Got it? All right. Can you see it? I wonder if I have to share it? Oh, share content. All right. Okay, so. Do you got it now?
Yep.
All right, so what I've done is I've taken the debt service fund and looked at what the tax levy would be going forward and based on our interests and penalties that we have right now for debt service. And you, and you can see that we did, we've boughten the levy down to keep the rate. But it's going to start going up and, and to keep it at just over a million, we'd have to buy it down by 200,000 again in '22 and again in '23. And this is also doing a forecast with what the debt service would be should we, in 2023, borrow for the public works garage. So this is, this is the levy that is forecasted for going forward. And, and you can see that sooner or later, we are not going to be able to continue to buy down this unless we can buy down the amount that we borrow. And that's, that's going to be my forecast is that, that's what we'll be doing is so that we can make sure that for the 15 to 20 years that we're going to put that bond out for the public works garage, that it's not going to be an impact to the, to the taxpayer. So I want to make sure that we continue looking at how much we have in debt service and, and make sure that it's affordable and that the levy stays, stays flat. And that's where Baird has been, been working with me on to make sure that we can, we can maintain that and look at how much we're borrowing, when we're borrowing, and to keep being, having a very good rating so that we do get the interest rates that we're, we're, we're getting. So how do I give this back? So I'm going to give it back to you, Aaron. And I think the debt service was the last one. Let me have the TIFs and you guys have all, you've all heard TIF enough. So nothing's changed since the last presentation on TIF. I've just added it for everybody so that it keeps, it keeps all the budget together. And if you have more questions on TIF, I'll be more than happy to not waste your time again on, on TIF. But it's there for anybody to, to see. Otherwise, that's it.
Thanks, Kathy. Again, remember that this is a committee of the whole meeting. So we're not looking for a motion tonight. But this was for FYI purposes. So let me open it up and, and see if we have any questions or comments.
Excellent presentation.
Excellent presentation, Kathy. So easy to follow along and so easily, it's wonderful. And your little briefing before was great.
Yeah, thank you.
Scott has a question.
Yeah, Scott, go ahead.
Kathy, in this iteration of the, your budget here, we've got a 36 cent city portion bump to the mill rate. Can you attribute most of that to the loss in revenue that we've, we're going to see from the excess value drop? Or?
Yeah, that, that, the, the biggest thing is that, that, that 11 million is spread under, over a smaller base.
Right.
And, and that's the attributable. So if I, I, I did one, one thing where I took that 33,000 that we could raise our levy up for, which we would probably take it up again from debt service so we wouldn't- from debt service so we wouldn't lose the, um, for levy limit. Um, and it still stayed at twenty-eight cents. So even taking thirty-seven or thirty-three thousand out of the levy, and this is, this would just be the TIF incre-, the city share of the TIF increment, that, that it, it still would be up there, be still forty-two cents. So, you know, that thirty-three thousand i- is not a lot of money. Um, and it's, and if you look at it, our, our levy amount is only going up two percent, which is, according to the state, um, that's what the inflationary, um, you know, the expenditure restraint program is, is attributed to. So I think there's a lot of, um, um, reason why it's going up like this. And, and again, you know, we weren't as, uh, fortunate as the school district to pay off all our debt and, and get another million from the state. So, um, that, it is what it is.
You, you mentioned in your cover letter, the highlights there of a hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand. You were, I think that's attributable somehow to this, uh, revenue we're getting less than the assessed value. Now, you mentioned neither taking that out of the fund balance or passing it on to the, the general tax rate? Now are we, I presume we're passing it on then, is that?
No, we are not.
We're not.
We are eating it.
Okay.
The, the foundry, uh, petitioned the state, eh, for an adjustment of their assessment, uh, for their two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen taxes. And so what they did was the state said, yeah, um, you've been overtaxed and everybody owes you, um, back tax, um, a refund on, on what you paid in taxes. Our share is a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand. Um, we did not, uh, put that in because our rate would probably go up to, our rate would probably increase fifty-eight cents and it ends up being the gross levy being almost a buck. And so, um, talking to the mayor a- and Aaron, um, we felt that, um, we had, uh, fund balance enough that we could, uh, absorb that, uh, refund. Um, but again, it, 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 their, uh, change in assessed value from, uh, the state, uh, with the foundry and probably some of the other manufacturing and the commercial loss with, um, Kmart that hitting this year, um, did, did change the, uh, assessed value base, um, so that it, it did go down.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I also want to tell you that, um, uh, the state will be releasing Friday, uh, the credit amounts that go into the final tax bill. Uh, so Fri-, so for the December first, um, packet, you will see what the, uh, real levy is going to be. So as soon as the school levy credit, the first dollar credit and the, um, lottery credit come out on Friday, um, I'll update, uh, everybody, uh, in the packet, uh, uh, and, and let everybody know what, um, what the final rate, uh, is going to look like. If, if you guys approve what, what I have here.
Well, we're not doing anything tonight, so you're going to be giving us new numbers. Yeah, I think that's a important comment to make. Uh, so you are seeing, uh, you know, you're seeing what the, what the levy is going to look like if you approve this, but you're not actually, if you look at the bottom line of that page that, uh, that's sitting up there now, where it talks about the fifty-eight dollars on a hundred-thousand-dollar home, that's going to be adjusted. Uh, and it will most likely be adjusted down. Uh, so if you can hold off till Friday on reporting any of that or discussing any of that part of it, uh, you'll get it, you'll have a more accurate number, uh, to use once Kathy can put that into her, her formula, formula here. Anybody else have anything else for the good of the meeting? Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Kealan, both second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Kealan, that we adjourn, uh, this, uh, special committee of the whole meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against. Motion carried. We're adjourned at, uh, eight forty-one PM. Thanks for the long night, everybody, appreciate it.